All right, try now.
Mr. Perino. Dadley.
Here.
Mr. Zamba. Mr. Nimitz.
Yep.
Is that a here?
Yes, can you hear me?
Mr. Merkel.
Here.
Yeah, second to you, Joe. Mr. Ernie.
Here.
Anthony Perino.
I'm here now.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Here.
Never mind.
Excuse us while we go through, uh, Groundhog Day.
These are the flashbacks.
We had a switch there. We were getting a feedback from the YouTube, broadcast that was coming in a couple of minutes late on our actual real time. So we've got, I think that resolved. We have got the roll call. We've got a quorum. We've got a meeting. Next item is the minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of April 20th, 2020?
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the minutes of April 20th, 2020. Any corrections? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? So carries. Okay, uh, the President's Report. A couple of items this evening. First off, uh, the extension of the liquor permits. Came, the question that came up this past couple of weeks. Liquor permits expire April 30th and are need to be renewed by May 1st. And we've got two of them in the village, Salsa Street and Elsie's. Salsa Street has asked that their liquor license permit fee be extended, the same as we have done with the vehicle stickers and the animal tags. Uh, and they've also asked if we were going to keep the fee at $2,000. Uh, I told them that we would extend the deadline on the liquor permit, application until July 1st, the same as we've done with the, vehicle stickers and the animal tags. As far as the amount of the fee, I'm going to leave that to be discussed with the Finance Committee and a recommendation to come forward at a later date to the board. So at this point, I would like, uh, someone to make a motion to author or to, uh, recognize the extension of the liquor license permit fees for both Salsa Street and Elsie's.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Merkel, seconded by Nemic. Any other comments, questions, or discussion?
Is a $2,000 fee a normal fee for liquor license?
That's our annual fee. Yes, Anthony.
Okay.
Hey, there being no further questions. Roll call, please.
Uh, Mr. Dadley.
Aye.
Mr. Ernie.
Aye.
Mr. Merkel.
Aye.
Mr. Nimitz.
Aye.
Mr. Perino.
Aye.
So carries. Okay. The next one is the Governor's Executive Order 2020-32. Governor Pritzker's executive order extending his original order on the pandemic emergency, extending it until May 30th. So we are still under the, uh, executive order for the pandemic with the stay at home. There are moves and efforts that, reopening, I guess is the word they want to use with, uh, that releasing or re, uh, what am I saying? Reevaluate the situation and consider the reopening and re, uh, re, uh, forget it. But anyway, that's been extended. There's some questions about it. It's being resolved, through the courts and not being resolved, but it's being handled through the courts and various other means at this point. But from the time being, we're going to still observe the, uh, Village Hall being closed and, uh, maintain our online many meetings for the time being. Uh, the other item that has come up this evening that I'd like some feedback from the board on. If you all recall, there's five acres of property just west of our Spring Hill Development that is for sale. Some years ago, we rezoned that to B2. I have recently received an inquiry as to whether the village would entertain what I would call an incubator type of manufacturing light industrial business in that uh, plot of, uh, land. Now.
What does that mean?
What does that mean? Uh, incubator is a term that has been used for giving assistance to small businesses to begin without them investing a lot of capital. Typically, they will have some equipment available that, uh, these people have use of for a fee for rental typically. Uh, we had a gentleman, I don't know, maybe six, eight years ago, came to two or three meetings and asked about it and had some ideas about possibly putting one up in the village, but I've not heard from him. And all of a sudden, last week, this inquiry came out of the blue as to whether we would consider an incubator type of, uh, business in that location.
Is it more of a service type business as opposed to retail or?
So it might be somebody, uh, for example, law, silk screening t-shirts. They might have a silk screening business that they want to try and they don't want rent a large place. And these people would rent them, you know, a workspace area type of thing. You see a lot of offices.
That's where that houses are just now.
Right. But now this is going on into, when I say it's an incubator and that they're trying to get somebody to, to start a business and help them start a business. And so they provide a little bit more than just the four walls and a roof.
So just knocking down the house.
The house is gone.
Oh, is it gone?
Yeah. Yeah, that old white house has been gone for, for a while.
Oh, I, I was talking about the other house that, with the garage attached to it, the big garage, just west.
Oh, no, that's not for sale.
Okay.
Well, that is, that was for sale, but that's an individual.
That's not what you're talking about.
That's not, I'm talking about the, the wooded lot in between.
Right, where the White House.
Where the White House is. Right. Right.
So Steve, I assume that like 3D printers and computers, things like that, it seems like what I see most time for incubator type businesses nowadays, where they get industrial style 3D printer and manufacture and sell them.
Yep. Something.
Laser cutting and things like.
I mean, there were not a lot of details. It's, as I said, right now, I think it's just somebody's pie in the sky concept at the moment, and they're just looking for a place to, to put up a building, uh, that would do this type of, uh, service in the area.
I have, I have no objection to it.
Be open to discussion on it. Yeah, I think it would be something to keep an eye, open to mind to.
Okay.
I would be agreeable to them giving a presentation just as the, uh, pet hospital or care did, but I would like to try to see some, some tax revenues.
Okay. All right, okay. Any other comments? If not, I will get back to them. If they want to pursue the idea any further, I'll invite them to a board meeting in the future. Okay.
Sounds good.
I believe that is it for the President's Report, Court's Report.
I have no report tonight.
Okay, thank you, Tony. Uh, planning and zoning, there is no report. Attorney's Report, Mr. Schuster.
Good evening. Couple of items. Uh, one, uh, carryover now for a little bit of time. We've been working on the, uh, modifying the waiver forms that could be used for those, uh, citizens or others who would volunteer to perform some work in the village. Uh, this all kind of, uh, interest in this was raised by the activities last fall that led to some troubles and, um, we then took a look at, uh, what could be done to, uh, get, uh, a better sign off from people that may, uh, perform some volunteer services. So you have before you four different forms. Two that are, uh, addressed to minors and, and two to adults. And the other division is between what might be considered an inherently dangerous activity and, uh, and some other activities. So my examples would be, uh, last fall, the tree cutting, um, business, uh, may have involved a, uh, village resident using some village equipment. Uh, and, and, uh, to the extent that that, uh, power equipment would be deemed dangerous, there, there might be a more, uh, there should be a more complete sign off. Uh, I'm not recommending it. I'm, I'm, uh, prepared it because that's, uh, among the uh, factors that led to this, uh, review. Uh, and then, uh, secondly, the other example has been that, uh, some persons have engaged in gardening activities at the village entrances. Nothing really inherently dangerous in that. Uh, the, the other example, in fact, we have a proposal, I think, for a group that wants to, uh, pick up trash along Sleepy Hollow Road, another, uh, relatively non-dangerous activity. Uh, but the idea has been that, I guess the village should have an understanding of who it is that's, uh, engaging in the, in the activities and, and ask them specifically to sign off that, uh, they're a volunteer. They're doing it at their, uh, initiative and at their risk. Uh, and, and that way there's a record of what's going on. Uh, especially, uh, for example, for the police department, just to know, uh, what's, what's, uh, being undertaken and be aware of it when it's, uh, scheduled to happen. So that's, uh, what we did. You have my cover memo and I, I do, uh, tell you that, uh, uh, in, in terms of some of the discussion that's taken place in the past, there's really no uh, foolproof, uh, absolute sign off. If somebody gets hurt and decides to bring a lawsuit, they're going to do it. Remember that the village does have a number of statutory immunities that would cover, uh, uh, things that happen, uh, in and around the village. Again, this would be a, a system to at least be able to monitor what is proposed to be done and who's involved with it and to, uh, highlight for them that, uh, they are volunteer and, and there's, there's always some risk when you're, uh, performing activities that, uh, uh, you could, uh, hurt yourself or someone else. Any questions or comments? Mr. Merkel, I know you, you, uh, thank you for sending over. Uh, you did have some questions last week. I can address those, uh, as we continue this discussion.
Anybody?
Mark. I know in the past, we've had several residents who have offered to pay for, say, tree cutting done on village property. And they'll hire a contractor. In the past, we've had the contractors sign for their workers the same form. I assume the same process would apply with these. And also for Eagle Scouts, I believe we did the same thing. We use the old wa, the old waiver form. Like we, the same each person working on or just the person in charge? How's that work?
Well, I, I think with this initiative, we'd want each person that's involved.
The same waivers would apply if, if somebody's hiring somebody to do something, the same waiver would work?
Yes, I think it would. Uh, in that instance, either the company could sign off for itself and its employees, for, uh, doing some work on public property.
Would there be any, uh, training that would have to be, uh, the, the individual who might be using, say, in the case of, uh, Form B, a dangerous activity where you had a power tool, would there need to be some, uh, vote of confidence that the individual knew how to use the chainsaw or the weed whacker prior to signing the form? Or does the form basically absolve the village from them being injured for neglect?
Well, the, the form is aimed at absolving the village. The, the first question is perhaps, uh, the policy of the village ought to be that no one other than its employees should be handling that equipment. And we just, and, and we discarded Form, uh, B altogether because we, the position is that no volunteer should engage in those types of activities at all. Uh, but if, uh, uh, you think that, uh, it's reasonable that they do, then I guess that's a discussion we have with Kyle about training, uh, you know, what would constitute sufficient training or what would be involved in any training, uh, for using that type of equipment?
Right. Uh, Mark, when, when, uh, Joe mentioned about a, uh, private company working on village property, I think we would need to see their, their insurance policy also and maybe have us named as a, as a.
Additional insured.
Yeah, additional insured for that work.
Uh, yes, I agree.
And you want me to go through my questions, Mark, or you just want to, if you kind of touched on what, uh, Anthony just said, what part of it, you know?
Right. Uh, I, let's start with that one, if you don't mind, Tom. Uh, I did talk to Kyle and, and he's with us this evening. Uh, there's a two-part answer. Uh, Tom had asked whether, uh, the, uh, village insurance company, routinely offers or provides any training or safety training, uh, programs. Uh, and I believe Kyle will tell you that they do not. However, he, uh, engages in, uh, safety training on an ongoing basis. So, um, you know, uh, remind me, Kyle, what, once a year or so, you, uh, you have a safety program presentation to your employees?
Yeah, every year we review all of our power tools and equipment and then, uh, every April or March, we go to the Utility Locate Seminar, which is digging underground. Uh, any new employee will go through proper training with a professional on chainsaws, like Dylan just completed his through steel. Uh, a lot of retailers have seminars for training and stuff like that. And anything that comes up that pertains to safety and the job. And if it applies to us and we have time to go to it, we go to it. But seasonals, they all get trained on every piece of equipment that I think they will be using. Uh, the only ones they don't is the international trucks because that requires a CBL. And obviously the backhoe. Backhoe is only used by full-time employees.
One, one of my concerns was, uh, Kyle was, at the last meeting, we, we gave the okay for you to hire somebody who doesn't have a high school degree, which, which could be a junior or senior in high school. Do, do they drive the tractors, you know, to, to mow the fields? And if so, what kind of training would that, that rather young person maybe, uh, maybe an, an experienced person get that? My, my brother is a, um, official in a, a village in, uh, Cook County. And they belong to, I think it's called Irma. It's a risk management, uh, organization. I think about 20 villages kind of pulled together. And they have, all, all their employees have training, uh, with any kind of equipment, whether it be a chipper or a chainsaw or a weed whacker, whatever, you know, and I, my concern to, to Mr. Schuster would just was that, that our employees are getting trained. Uh, you know, that, and if we, if we didn't have the training, then to try to introduce that in the village.
Uh, well, I mean, if, if I have a seasonal that I can train on the, the big mower that mows the big fields and I feel that he's capable of doing it and he has the maturity to handle it, then I'll have him try it on a trial basis. And if he can't handle it, then he won't drive it. It's not, it's not a piece of equipment where you can just get on the seat, start it up and put it in drive. You have to, it's got gears. You have, there's a lot to it. Um, and usually they have to be with me for more than one year to get on it. Uh, the last season I had use it was Tanner. He was with us for four summers. He was able to drive it.
Okay. And then one of my concerns also was I, I, I just feel that we should restrict power tools and just by the virtue of the fact that we're going to call that second release while operating, while engaged in dangerous activities tells me that, that that's something that, uh, a non-employee should not be touching, in my opinion, that, um, uh, I, I, you know what? Our volunteers, I love them. I, I appreciate them. They, they do a lot to help. I just don't think they should be handling that, say, a chainsaw. I, I, I looked at CDC said there's 30,000 chainsaw accidents a year and the average number of stitches is a 110 per accident. And there's how many dismemberments and things with, with, with chippers. I, 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 you know, if, if they're out there and, and Kyle's with another employee and they're cutting and someone's dragging brush near the chipper, I don't have a problem with that. I, it's just, I, I think we're just being neglectful if we let them operate the, the equipment and just by the fact that we put it as a dangerous activity. Uh, some lawyer is gonna, that's going to be in his pleadings, I guarantee you, that, uh, they had him engaged and that what even we acknowledge is a, a dangerous activity. In, in the event that, uh, these volunteers are doing activities, are they always, do they always go through you, Kyle, to say they're going to do something or would they not, would they just organize themselves and not notify? Well, I know we got a form to fill out. I guess my question is that if, you know, uh, four people came to you and said, we're going to do something over a weekend. And then you spoke with them individually and said, you know, what's your level of experience? You know, what's your comfort level? What are you looking to do? And then you made the determination that they were able to operate, uh, a power tool, let's say. And then they were willing to sign the form. Would that, and I'm not suggesting to put pressure on you. I'm just asking the question. Would that be something that would be in your, in your, uh, you know, wheelhouse to say, you'd say, okay, you know, Mr. Perino could do it because he has shown, you know, or talked about some knowledge that he has?
Uh, well, for example, uh, last fall, we had, um, Bill Hoth came to me and asked if he could help cut Sleepy Hollow Road. Uh, we discussed what would be the easiest option for him and the volunteers, and I decided that I would come in with them. I drove the international truck with the chipper. Uh, Bill and a couple of volunteers followed behind. Uh, they brought their own chainsaws to use, their own safety equipment, chainsaw chaps, helmets, uh, earmuffs. And that's really the only time that anyone volunteer-wise that I know of has used power tools other than a mower for the entrance of village equipment. Uh, the only other thing I hear from volunteers is you'll, they'll ask for safety vests and trash bags and our, uh, garbage collectors for when they go and pick up trash alongside the road. Other than that, any other volunteer activity? It doesn't really come through me or my office. It might come through the Village Hall and then they'll notify me. But most of the time they're on the weekends and they're pretty, they're, they're not using power equipment. So that one time last fall was the only time that we really used power climate, equipment for volunteers.
Okay, thank you.
Would we have any issue with, uh, volunteers that clean the entrance areas? I know I've seen them out there using weed whackers. I mean, a weed whacker is certainly a power tool, but it's a lot less hazardous than a chainsaw. I, I have no issues with that. I mean.
The village equipment or their own?
Their own. So I mean, how does that fit in? Okay.
Which raises the question, if it's their equipment, for example, we've had numerous Eagle Scouts do projects that required the use of powered equipment. The bridge. Those were.
Eagle Scouts can only be adults.
Yeah.
Okay, so you don't let the, the kids.
The scouts touch any power tools?
Okay.
Plus I would think the Eagle Scouts are probably covered under a policy of insurance also.
It doesn't let them touch power tools.
Then let them touch power tools.
Well, the other exception, of course, we haven't talked about yet is the Service Club. They, from time to time, uh, do work on the public property. I think we're, uh, they, they probably have an insurance policy, uh, uh, where the village should be an additional insured and, and, uh, they, they do all kinds of work. So, again, though, they're using their own equipment by and large, not village equipment.
I had a question for you too, Mark. If, if you had run this by our insurance company.
Yeah, they had nothing much to say about it, frankly. They, um, they're, they're not interested in, um, trying to advise the village how to handle this end of it. Which is a little surprising to me, but on one hand, but not on another, uh, they, they'll deal with, uh, the claims if they come in, but not with, uh, uh, documentation that might prevent the claim in the first place. So where should we go from here?
Doesn't sound like they can hear you, Mark.
I can hear Mark just fine.
Yeah, I, I don't know if they can at the Village Hall.
Oh, okay.
Can I be heard?
We can hear you now. We lost your entire commentary, Mark. You have to repeat yourself.
From what point?
Mark, what, no, yeah. So do we need a motion?
From the point where Tom last asked you the question.
Tom asked, all right, Tom asked if, uh, the insurance company had commented on, uh, this issue. And my answer to him was no, they did not. Uh, they, they are not, um, inclined to, uh, give that kind of advice to the village.
Okay.
So do we need a motion to approve the use of these forms?
So do we need a motion to approve the use of these forms as our new waiver form replacing the old ones and the procedure?
That was my next question is where do we go from here?
Mark, what, what, if the, the fact that they don't want to hear about it, what, what does that mean if we have a claim as far as them covering the claim? What do you think?
Well, it's not that they don't want to hear about it, they just, uh, declined to offer any advice about it. And, and part of the answer to that is because they'll handle the claims or, or evaluate the claims if, if and when they come in. Uh, rather than focus on, uh, advising the village, what sort of, uh, waiver form or release should be used in advance.
I, I agree with your initial comment that even with these forms, we're gonna, we're gonna be sued. So I, I mean, it would be my, I don't have a problem with the, the first form for non-dangerous activities, but I, I would have a problem. Even having a form that's entitled, uh, dangerous activities and, and, uh, having somebody sign that.
Okay, so any further conversation or discussion? Otherwise, we have a motion to approve, uh, waiver and release A or B.
I would make a motion that we approve waiver form A, um, and adopt that as a new, um, release form for non-dangerous activities in the village.
Okay, we've got, uh, Diatley moving to approve the presented form A, waiver and release, it was seconded by Tom.
Either Tom or, uh, Mr. Harney, I think it was Ed actually.
Okay, Ed, okay. The motion was made by Diatley, seconded by, uh, Harney to, uh, take Form A as the waiver and release for, uh, future, uh, events within the village requesting or requiring volunteers. Do we have any further comments, questions or discussion?
Would that also go for the minor Form A one, or are we just looking at the adult Form A?
The motion right now is just for A, would you ever be A and A one? I could amend, I'll, I'll amend the motion and have it include also Form A one for minors.
I'd second that.
Okay, we've got a, uh, well, since Steve is amending the motion, Ed, would you second it? You provided the original second.
Yes, I second.
All right, thank you, Ed. Okay, Anthony, I don't need your second on that.
No worries, that's fine.
Okay, the motion has been revised to include both Form A and Form A one. There being no further comments, questions or discussion, uh, roll call please.
Hi.
Uh, Mr. Nimitz.
Hi.
Mr. Merkel.
Hi.
Hi. Mr. Harney.
Hi.
Mr. Dattley.
Hi.
Okay.
So, questions?
Okay, Joe.
So does this mean now that the residents that use some kind of power tool to clean up the village entrance ways and things like that are not going to be allowed by village policy? Or do we need a, is this waiver acceptable for that? If they're not using village equipment?
No, um. I'm gonna have to, uh, look at that. I think it's, it, it will be, uh, and the fact that the village is not providing any, uh, of its equipment. Should, uh, resolve that side of it. And, uh, anything they bring on their own is, is what they bring on their own.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. All right, okay, so that's it for the waiver and release, uh, I believe you got one more item, Mark?
I do.
Okay.
I had, uh, informed you, uh, several meetings ago that the, uh, State, uh, Department of Housing Authority had asked for an update to the village's affordable housing plan. So we've, uh, uh, taken a look at, uh, the recent numbers. Uh, the village's position has improved, uh, largely just because of changes in economic conditions. Um, so that, you know, you're closer to, uh, the goal of having ten percent of the housing stock of the village be in an affordable range. The, uh, update also, um, identified that, uh, uh, vacant lots previously identified have been reduced, there's been some, uh, new houses that have been built. So there's a, uh, update to that information and there's some thirty-six or so uh, potential places that a house might be built at some time in the future. Uh, but you can see that the, the gist of the plan is basically the same. This is a village that is now landlocked. It does not have, um, uh, obvious opportunities to pre, provide, uh, affordable housing by new development or, uh, uh, for affordable housing to be included in new development, which is the uh, really the primary target of this law is that where building is occurring, some of it should be designed to be within an affordable range. Uh, how that is, uh, going to play out over time under this law, uh, I'm not really sure. Uh, if you, um, think about what this law does, what it, it really, uh, um, gives an opportunity to a developer. If, uh, that developer wishes to insist on including affordable housing in a community that does not meet the minimum requirements. And that's, uh, there's an appeal board in Springfield if he's turned down and so on. Uh, uh, but the, uh, odds of a multiple unit development in the village of Sleepy Hollow, uh, under present circumstances is very, very minimal. The one opportunity that exists over by the Kinder Care, um, center, uh, on the east side. Uh, it, it's, uh, the, the problem is access, there's not ready access to that property, although there's a potential access. Um, there's also, of course, the issue of water and sewer at that location to support multiple units. And, and that's largely, I think, why nothing has happened over there. In all the time, in the ten years it's gone by with this, uh, law and the books, it's still. So, uh, this is due to be filed with the state by the end of June. Uh, so it's, I'm presenting it tonight, asking you to consider, uh, it and, uh, pass a resolution approving this update so that it can be filed with the state of Illinois.
Okay.
Go here, what was that resolution?
Resolution five twenty-seven.
Okay, we have a motion to approve resolution number five twenty-seven.
Okay.
Okay, that was, Anthony, did you make the motion?
No, I think, uh, Ed did.
Oh, Ed, Ed made motion and. All right. Okay, Harney made the motion, Diatley seconded, uh, mo, resolution number five twenty-seven. Resolution adopting the update to the village policies to achieve the goals of the Illinois Affordable Housing Plan and Appeals Act of two thousand and four. Do we have any further comments, questions or discussion? Is someone trying to? No, okay, no further comments or discussion, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Schuster, you can now mail our revised affordable housing plan to the state.
Will do. Uh, have a matter of old business a little later on, Mr. President, but nothing further at this time.
All right, thank you, Mark, appreciate it. Uh, engineers report. Mr. Steel.
It's nothing new to report.
No report, all right, thank you, Jeff. Uh, Director of Finance, approval of the accounts payable for May fourth, two thousand and twenty. We have a motion to authorize the accounts payable May fourth.
I move that we authorize the accounts payable, the total is sixty-seven thousand, five hundred and forty-seven dollars and thirty-four cents to be paid for, uh, May fourth, twenty twenty.
Second. Second, motion by Perino, seconded by Merkel to approve the accounts payable of May twenty, or May fourth, twenty twenty, in the amount of sixty-seven thousand, five hundred and forty-seven dollars and thirty-four cents. Any additions or deletions, comments or questions? There being none, roll call please.
Mr. Harney.
Hi.
Mr. Merkel.
Hi.
Mr. Nimitz.
Hi.
Mr. Dattley.
Hi.
Mr. Perino.
Hi.
Motion carries, okay, the uh, finance director's segment is done, we move on to public comments. Uh, public comments, we've had three submitted electronically to us, uh, for this evening. First one is from, uh, CM Parker. He wants to remind us that the summer edition of the newsletter is almost done. They will send the proof for approval at the next meeting, the May eighteenth meeting. So we're going to add that to the agenda, uh, per his request. And also he asked, last year we agreed that the summer edition would be printed and mailed since it includes the July fourth info and the water report. And he just wants to verify that, uh, we are going to do a printed copy of the newsletter for the Fourth of July again this year. Uh, what is the board's feelings upon that?
Have we had any information from the service club if they're going to proceed with the Fourth of July or not?
They're still thinking about it.
Okay.
Just for clarification.
The, the drop date debt for it has gotta be the eighteenth of May if we're gonna approve a newsletter.
Right.
I would say it's highly doubtful.
I can't imagine how they can have it. The other thing, just for clarification, we do not need to, uh, mail out the water reporting more as long as we post it to the, uh, website and publish it on the back of the water bill.
Yeah, for our site.
So that'll, so there is no need to mail that out, so I'll make sure that Wendy has that information and Kyle, you wanna work with me on that one?
Sure.
Okay. Uh, since the service club doesn't know whether they're gonna have the Fourth of July, I guess we can always punt this, uh, question down to the eighteenth of May ourselves, as to whether we print or don't print. If they run with it, maybe we print it, if they don't run with the Fourth, we don't print.
That would make sense, I would agree with that.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, we'll let Mr. Parker know on that. Uh, the next one is from Ken Hueson. Uh, a resident of Sleepy Hollow who wants to address the loss of historical architecture in Sleepy Hollow. His purpose for writing today is to urge the Sleepy Hollow Board to implement an ordinance to protect the architecture found in the village. Particular, in particularly in the Sleepy Hollow Manor and the Saddle Club Estates developments. A lot of unique designs have been lost through exterior renovations. Initially during the planning stages for Saddle Club Estates, there were concerns that many of the homes in close proximity would look alike since they would all be built by the same builder. For this reason, Polty Corporation offered five floor plans with four distinctively different exterior exterior styles per plan. Midway through the development, the floor plans were slightly modified and new exterior options became available. As a result, no two homes next door or adjacent to each other look alike. Now, however, the most, however, now, however, most of the homes in Saddle Club Estates do look alike as a result of building permits issued by the village for exterior renovations. Of the homes originally built, they're, they're with an okay, of the original homes originally built, they're with an English Tudor exterior. They now have cheap-looking plastic siding. For one particular example of this is the Hampton floor plan. Only three Hampton plans were built with an English Tudor exterior. All three have since been re-sited and now there are no more Hampton plans with a Tudor exterior. The same can be said for the houses originally with vertical siding. Replacements now have the siding in a horizontal orientation. The custom feel has been lost in Saddle Club Estates. Sleepy Hollow Manor has the same issue as Saddle Club Estates. But it is not as severe as the neighborhood was built by various firms. However, many of the homes in the Manor were only built once. So once the exterior is redone, there will be no more like it. There are other municipalities nearby that have ordinances in place to preserve the original nature of homes and to prevent the neighbors' homes from looking like adjacent homes. In all honesty, I don't think we should be concerned with what the sides or the rear of a home are like, but the front should be kept in the original style. The color scheme can be changed while the styling is preserved. I strongly hope that you consider such an ordinance and enact it before all the original architectural facades are gone for good and Sleepy Hollow looks like all the other suburbs with rows of look-alike housing. Thank you for your time and consideration, Ken. Okay, uh, Ken would like us to consider historical architecture in future ordinances. Uh, the last comment from the public that I received is from Joe LaVagina, I believe. Uh, the topic is flooding and drainage, especially in the northeastment and properties along east side of Hillcrest. Uh, his comments are as follows. There continues to be excessive surface water and subsoil saturation in the northeastment and extending far into the properties of seven twenty-two, seven twenty-four and seven twenty-six Hillcrest Drive. This area is unable to be properly maintained by homeowners due to the risk of equipment sinking. The issue was raised two years ago and we see no signs of improvement. Does the village have any plans to address this ongoing problem? Uh, I believe our response to that would be that, uh, last year we set aside, uh, priority one, priority two and priority three in the drainage. And I believe, uh, that area of Hillcrest from seven twenty-two to seven twenty-six was in priority number two. Kyle, uh, Jeff, any update on to that sixu, situation at the moment?
Uh, no update till this year's budgets figured out and what we're gonna do as far as change on, on this summer.
Yeah, we have a plan all set up, it's just whether it's gonna be funded or not in regards to that, so.
Okay. All right, and, uh, I believe is it, there's no other, uh, public comments this evening. Uh, move on into the trustees reports, uh, roads and parks, Ed?
Uh, what I have to report is scheduled to be covered under old business, so I have nothing other to report than that.
Okay, all right, thanks a lot, Ed, we'll hear from you later then. Uh, finance, Don is not with us this evening, uh, water and sewer, Joe?
Uh, yes, I submitted a written report, any questions on that?
I have any questions for Joe's report? There being none. Anything else, Joe?
That is all.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Police and Public Safety, Steve?
Uh, no report.
I have, I have a comment and, uh, Police, if I may. Um, last Tuesday, my, uh, father-in-law in Sleepy Hollow here passed away. And, uh, I wanna commend the, um, I, I'm the one who, who found him, and, um, there was a prompt response, uh, by Rutland Dundee. This guy is across really fast. And also, um, Sergeant, Sergeant Wilson and another officer. I don't recall his name. Uh, I guess, uh, under Police, I really wanted to address, um, Sergeant Wilson. You, you always think of, of a police officer, uh, writing tickets or whatever, but she was so professional and, and so kind, uh, caring, uh, comforting, and, um, so I publicly wanna, wanna thank her and the, the officer that, that, uh, assisted her. Um, I've, I've known, uh, Sue Wilson for, for a lot of years and, and always respected her, but, uh, I have a, a special respect for her after, um, the way she handled things. And, uh, and later I got a, a kind, uh, text from the chief, and I, I appreciate that, chief. That's all I have to say.
Okay. All right. Thank you, uh, Tom, and thank you, Steve. Uh, Building and Environment, Tom?
I have a lot to say about Police, but not, nothing about this.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Tom. Uh, Building and Environment, Anthony?
Uh, no report, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Anthony. Uh, Old Business. Uh, we've got the report, discussion, and the resolution of the hour claim for damages to trees and vegetation. Uh, Mr. Schuster, I believe this is, uh, your remaining item for us this evening?
It is. Uh, so the village insurer, uh, took up the claim and has offered a settlement, uh, to Ms. Hour that, uh, would, uh, provide her some monetary compensation for her alleged, uh, uh, damage to property. In, uh, response to that, she has asked if the village is going to provide her a mutual release that is a sign-off uh, of, uh, from the village, that the village will take no action against her as a result of, uh, this matter. Uh, so, uh, there is, um, I guess, the, the position of the insurance company is they, they dealt with the claim for property damage. That's within the purview of the village policy. And, uh, the, all the, any other matters then are, uh, up to the village as to how to respond or whether to respond further, uh, to her claims. If you recall her original correspondence, she had asked for a, a sum of money that she would then donate back to the village uh, towards the acquisition of a speed detection device to be placed on Sleepy Hollow Road. Uh, she had asked for a number of trees and, and some plantings. Uh, and she had asked that a, uh, speci- a policy specific to tree trimming or removal on Sleepy Hollow Road be adopted by the village board. Uh, so she, uh, is now, uh, is, uh, or will obtain a sum of money. Uh, I don't know if any of that is intended still to be donated back to the village. Uh, the village has, uh, some tree management regulations on its books now, but no additional policy that's specific to Sleepy Hollow Road or that involves any, uh, citizen committee, uh, i- in, um, evaluating or making decisions about maintenance of trees and plantings along Sleepy Hollow Road. Uh, and the village, it really has no idea of where she intends to plant, uh, whatever trees and other vegetation she will obtain with the settlement funds. So, I guess I, I just, I wanted to report these, uh, elements to you. I don't know, uh, what, because we haven't, we haven't had occasion to speak, uh, on, uh, with this detail about a settlement at all in this matter. If you wish to, uh, leave her to the insurance company, you wish to, uh, have a, uh, separate settlement agreement that would include mutual releases, uh, she to the village and, and the village to her, uh, or, uh, address any of these other, um, uh, side issues, if you will. So I'm, I'm presenting it, uh, looking for some direction. She is very anxious about the planting season. Uh, it's her estimation that, uh, now is the, the prime time. Uh, although it's gonna be very cold in the next several nights, uh, and, uh, I'm busy bringing plants inside at my house, but, uh, uh, i- i- in general, it's the planting season, so she's anxious for, uh, moving ahead.
Mr. President, I have a question.
Yes.
A general question is, shouldn't we be talking about this in executive session or not?
I can respond to that.
Okay.
If that's all right.
Yeah.
It is your election, uh, that you may, uh, uh, because this, uh, in, i- involves the threat of litigation, elect to have an executive session discussion of this? It's never required. It's, it's your option. And th- this would be an example of something that could be discussed in executive session, should you so choose.
Is there a, an agreed-upon amount with her?
There is. Uh, they, in fact.
Do we have a deductible plan or?
No, there's not a deductible. Am I right about that, Mr. President, or?
Uh, there is no deductible. Correct. Okay, and, and it is, is, is the settlement hinging on whether we put together some kind of road plan or is, is it, is, or is that off the table kinda, or is that just?
The insurance company is simply, it's just, it's just exactly what you'd expect. They're offering a sum of money and asking her to sign off a release for that sum of money. They're not engaged in any of these other issues because it's beyond the purview of their policy. They, they have nothing to do with any of this other stuff.
Okay, I was asking if their stuff is holding it up. She says, I'm not gonna sign the release unless I get a, a, a plan for the road, or is there anything like that going on?
At, at this point, she's only asked for a release by the, uh, of her, by the village.
Okay, what, what do you suggest on that, Mark? Is, is that, is that commonplace, or?
Well,
Can the insurance co-
Uh, let me just answer that. The, the village is not going to be, uh, that I've heard, uh, uh, going to be suing her for anything out of this. So for, to give a release to her is, uh, uh, of no particular, uh, moment. Uh, however, she does want Mr. Killinger also to sign off. I assume as, uh, uh, your employee, you can give direction to him as to how he should react to that.
You know, this discussion, this discussion began in executive session. I would like it to continue in executive session.
I'll support it, Matt.
Executive session?
I'm sorry.
That, you're making a motion then to adjourn to executive session for purposes of discussing a matter threatened or potential litigation under Section two C eleven?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to a mo- to adjourn to executive session to discuss the Mona Hour settlement according to the Open Meetings Act, Section two C-
Eleven.
Eleven?
So, Mark, my question is now with the Zoom meeting and YouTube and all that, do we know how to do that? And should we just table this discussion till the next meeting?
Mr. Mills, Mr. Florence?
We, one of the things we could do is move this to the end and then shut everything down, but coming back is our problem?
I, I would feel more comfortable so we don't have an issue like we did last time with a possible violation of just tabling this to the next meeting so that Mr. Mills and John Florence can discuss, and maybe, Mark, the best way of doing this with a Zoom meeting, because I just hate to jump into that territory right now. So I, I would, if, if Ed doesn't mind, I wouldn't mind tabling this to the next meeting or the meeting after that when Mark's available.
They may very well blow the whole settlement if she's trying to get these trees in the, or bushes, or whatever it is in the ground in, in the next week or so, so.
Can we just push it to the end of this meeting?
I, I would agree with that, Anthony.
Mark, a question on that. If we push it to the end of the meeting, we've got to come back to the open session for any action to be taken.
That, that is correct. You have to come back to the open session to adjourn your meeting as well.
The end of the meeting and then just close out everything at the end of the executive session. I've got to come back and open it to them, the public again.
I understand. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's a, it's, uh, a difficulty under these present circumstances. You really need to have uh, two separate Zoom links where you can step out of the one, everybody step into the other one, and then come back to the first one. I'm sure it's technologically possible. Uh, it's just, uh, it takes a, a lot more setup.
You should see the, the day's look on the technicians.
Yeah, I, it, well, there's a motion on the floor. Can we?
Okay, right. There's a-
And you, you come for-
On the floor, uh, I need to call a vote on this. Roll call, please.
Maybe just one discussion. Can I make a comment before we call for the vote is, is I, I would suggest we not go into executive session. It just sounds like a question. Do we wanna give a mutual release? Then it's already, it's, it's already been settled, apparently, that that the, uh, insurance company's in agreement and Ms. Hour is in agreement, and that we just vote on it outside of executive session.
Now, is Ms. Hour in agreement? I thought this was being, going to be proposed for the insurance company.
Oh, they've, they've sent her a release form. You've got a copy of it.
Yes.
I'm not aware that she signed it yet, but it's certainly more than proposed. I mean, it's, it's right there on, on her table.
So, question, we, do we, do we know the status of those other, the A, B, and C you addressed? And there's also in there, she's requested, uh, Bill Hoff to sign off on a release of claim too, and that one, I don't think you mentioned that. He's a private citizen. Where does that fit in this whole thing?
Let me back up here. Do we wanna take a vote on this motion to go to executive session?
Well, yeah.
I, I, it's a, it's a motion and a second.
Somebody could call the question.
I gotta have a vote, so I'm gonna-
Call the que- call the question.
Tony? Roll call, please.
Mr. Brano.
Uh, nay.
Mr. Nimmick?
No.
Mr. Merkel?
No.
Mr. Hardy?
Aye.
Mr. Dattley?
No.
Four to one. We're not going to executive session. Okay. All right. Insurance co-
I would like to, Steve, get the floor?
Go ahead.
I would, based on the, I, I agree with all of that's concerns about going to executive session. I just voted no because I don't think we should now. Um, I would move that we table this to the next meeting until we get some answers on some of these other questions, because it doesn't do the village any good to vote on or to approve this now, and then she's planting trees that would be, say, clear that we don't know where they're gonna go or other, we stiff to me on answer questions, so I would move that we table this to the next meeting.
My comment would be, I would like to see, if we calling this a settlement, a statement such as, "The village reserves the right to maintain the village right-of-way on Sleepy Hollow Road in accordance with existing statutes," or something to that degree. Or what, or we're just gonna be doing this again down the road?
Which is another reason I'd like to table it. Is that a second in my motion?
Don't have a second on the table, Joe.
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded to table, well, not to table, but to postpone to a later date.
That is correct. I'm sorry, Steve.
Correct way of phrasing. So we've got a, a motion and a second to postpone until a later date to consideration of the settlement and the agreement with Mona Hour. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
I need discussion first, Steve, or?
Discussion.
Okay, you can have discussion.
I, I, I just, I'd say, I, that, just reading Mark's question, there's too many questions there. Ed brought up a very good point. We just got this at, uh, almost ten o'clock this morning where I could finally read it. It just seems that we're, it's not, I can't make it have an intelligent discussion. How do we have some of these other answers? So that's why I'd like to postpone it to the next meeting.
My comment would be that the insurance company, and I, I assume she had an attorney, her attorney reached an agreement for some-
She does not have an attorney.
Okay, they, they've reached an agreement with her. I, I, I didn't see anything this morning. I was involved in other things, uh, even what the settlement is, but if they've reached an agreement, the, the insurance company's not gonna be able to put in to the agreement that that we're gonna decide where property lines and right-of-ways exist, and it's, the insurance company's made either a decision economically or be- because they think there's been missed, something done wrong by the village to, to pay a certain amount of money. I don't even know what the amount of the money is. And all we're gonna do, if, if, if we, we think we're gonna get, uh, things clearer and not, not, uh, have this come up again, this one is, this is just gonna, gonna drag on until the next planting season. If, if the insurance company's happy with it and she's happy with it, give her the money and run, and I, I don't, I don't see where reciprocal releases, I, I don't think we, we can uh, tell Mr. Hoff to, to sign her lease, that's for sure, and we can't tell Kyle to sign any release personally. But I, I think, I, I don't see where, what her concern is with that, to be honest with you, because I don't see any cause of action that they would have against her either, so. I would just say, let's put this thing to bed and, and move on to something more important.
Ms. Hour has not signed off on this, correct?
Not to my knowledge.
And what if she doesn't sign off?
Well, that's, I, I mean, obviously, uh, that's a problem. Why, why don't I take, take it up with her? She's been, uh, working through Mr. Todd Priggy on this matter, and I'll, I can reach out to Todd and, and tell him what, uh, the concerns are and, and come back at your very next meeting, not postpone it all the way to June, and, and give you a report as to where, where things stand, and if she is in fact prepared to accept the insurance company settlement, uh, uh, subject to whatever, whatever conditions. And, uh, let's try to wrap it up, uh, two weeks from now.
Yeah. I would like to wrap it up. I just have seen no indication that she will accept this. So.
I, no, I, the indications to me are she would accept it. She just wanted a village sign-off to equal her own. But, but
Okay.
You may be concerned about where she's going to plant replacement product uh, in relation to, uh, uh, I believe it's nineteen-twenty-two Sleepy Hollow Road.
Yeah.
In order to avoid or try to avoid a repeat of this, uh, you know, a few years from now.
Does the insurance company even really need board approval to move forward on this?
Absolutely not. It's, it's not a question. The, the insurance company is, is out. They're done. They, they put their money on the table and sent her a release, and they're-
Right.
These other items are, are perhaps matters of interest to the village, but are outside the scope of the policy of insurance, and that they, they have no interest in any of them.
Okay.
And if she, if she would plant those in, in inappropriate pla- inappropriate ways, we have the right to tell her to move them, so.
Well, yeah, two, two comments on that. It would be more useful to try to influence her to, to not plant them there in the first place, but understand that the, the boundary line of this right-of-way is what's, uh, underlying this whole issue. It's not defined. And so she has one opinion about where she thinks she can, she has, uh, domain and the village has another, and, and that's, uh, uh, frankly, predominantly what led to a settlement. Uh, from the insurance company perspective, is they don't wanna litigate where this line actually is. If they, you know, for the acceptable amount could avoid it, and that's the choice they made. If they, you know, for the acceptable amount could avoid it, and that's the choice they made.
Mark, one other comment, and they released the claims, Bill Hoff's last name is misspelled.
It's H O F, is that right?
Yeah, it's H O P F and they're Hoff.
Yeah, well. Regardless, you know, I, I think your comment is correct. None of us can tell Mr. Hoff what he should or shouldn't do in this, in regard to this matter. But H O F is, I, I probably started that misspelling because I wasn't aware until recently. But in any event, that's Mr. Hoff.
Okay, so the discussion is tabled until 18th?
Yes, don't we need to vote on it?
Okay, vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed?
No.
Four to one. It is postponed until May 18th. We'll put it back on the agenda for old business on the 18th. Okay, next item is 1756 Hillcrest Parkway. Ed, you said that you wanted to address that issue.
Yeah, I think Anthony and I both will. And I'll refer everybody to the last page in their packet. That's a summary of what we're talking about here rather than me explaining it again. I went over to the residence at 755, 756 Hillcrest, the ones who wrote the letter. Kyle went with me. We met with them. Anthony has given the board pictures, photos of the property. What I saw today was still standing water in the back of their property, as in Anthony's picture. Speaking with Kyle and Kyle, jump in if I understand this incorrectly. First of all, to possibly remedy the situation, it would require a drainage line to be buried. That drainage line would have to go across the neighbor's property at 1754 Hillcrest Parkway. Or Park. I asked the property owner, does she have permission? Should this be a possibility? Does she have the permission of the adjoining property owner? She said she hadn't even talked to him about it. But she was very concerned with the delays and that, that have happened so far. So what, what wound up, we got the next door neighbors, the Ferguson's, in on a discussion with all of us. And what transpired from that discussion was they would be receptive to allowing a drainage line to go through their property and hook up to the drain that was recently installed over by the road there to remedy another drainage situation there. However, they would ask that the drainage, the ditch for the drainage pipe be then covered with suitable soil so that they could plant some grass. That brought up questions. And question for Mark, I guess. And Jeff, what would be involved easement wise? What requirements?
Mark, you want to or me?
Well, if it's part of, if it's deemed to be part of the village drainage system, then an easement would be required through the yard. Jeff, probably a minimum of 10, 15?
Probably be 10 feet in this instance, just because it'd be a small line going through.
Yeah, so 10 feet and, and of course, it usually serves everyone better. If easements of that nature can be on the perimeter, but I don't know what that entails at that locate, how far, how far you start adding length and, and distance to, to manage that. Because you can't build or have obstructions over a public easement. To the extent it's just a private improvement to benefit their property. And, and I don't know, I saw the letter, but I don't know all the underlying facts to know if this is really a public issue or not. If it's a private matter, then it's between the two of them as to whether there's an easement or not. So I'd have to look at it a little further to be sure, but it, it sounds like it's public drainage related. I just don't know for a fact.
Well, the drainage, Mark, from my understanding is from the homeowner's sump pump. And they wish to expel it through, from their property through the neighbor's property to a drainage structure on the other side.
My thought would be if it's coming from their sump pump, is that really a village responsibility?
It's a good question.
I mean, I mean, don't get me wrong, if we set precedent here and say we're gonna do this, we could open ourselves up to every, every person in the village. Cause we all know we have water issues and sump pumps that drain out into various spots of our yards.
Yeah.
So I think we have to be very careful with that.
I, I agree. A little background here, for years and years and years, they've been draining to the swale in the front of their yard. Now, with the big project in phase one or whatever it's called, the village spent thousands of dollars to redo all of that in front of their house. So the question that was brought up, so they're denied this. Let's just assume they're denied their request. So then they'll say, then they claim, well, then they will just put their sump pump drain back in the front of their house, which is down the road. Now, I don't know if they can do that or not, but down the road, it's gonna incur much greater expense to the village to redo what we already redone once. Little other background, I'm quite familiar with the property since I lived right there. There was no drainage issue there while I was there, no drainage issue whatsoever. But due to another, I won't get into it, another home and the manner it was put in from henceforth, there be, there was a drainage issue that resulted from allowing that home to be built. Now, again, this happened two decades ago. None of us were involved with that. But it's not a real clear situation. It begs the question, hypothetically, if it was approved, what would it cost? Can, can Kyle address that?
I estimate it to be around $500 to $700. That's with bringing in dirt for the Ferguson's pending there. That's what they want if we were to run the line. If I can add to this, so we did that work in the front. Now the sump pump goes to the back and it doesn't just affect their house. It affects the three other neighbors' backyards as well. A lot of the issue is that sump pump is just recycling water. It has no way to get out over there. It's a low lying area. And it's right by the flood plain. If we ran the sump pump to the new drain tile, it'll be able to get some of that water out of there and it would eventually dry up. But yes, the cost would be pretty minimal. We'd have to rent a trencher by the PVC pipe. Be done in about a day and then bring topsoil in and, and take care of the Ferguson's backyard where the pipe is run.
Kyle, I know we did all that work on the drainage easement there that goes out to locusts. And I know, and Jeff still may know too, how close is that catch basin to the end of the drainage easement? Where's that drainage easement actually end? At the property line or someplace in the middle of their yard?
It's hard to say where the drainage easement ends. The catch basin starts right, basically right by that comm ed box that's back there. And I'm not sure where that lies as far as that easement that's there.
The easement actually runs along all those backyards right in behind there. So basically is, is like Kyle said, is that catch basin is right on the other side of the comment box that's back there.
So if you want, if you were to run it to the drainage easement and then follow the drainage easement to the catch basin, you're, we're gonna have to cut out a bunch of shrubs and stuff like that. And the work is, you know, it's gonna be a higher cost project. Because as right now, the easement's full, it's got shrubs and trees and stuff in there.
Yeah, and I'd fear that that line then would get a little bit too long. And since all that is going to be, have to pump out into the storm structure that Kyle had installed last year, maybe it was the year before, is it just be too much pressure? And the water actually wouldn't get to where it actually is. Because once you start adding more length to it, is it takes more energy to pump it out of there than it actually is going to be worth it.
So Mark, if we do, do this work on private property, should we get an easement for part of it ahead of time? Or can we legally expend these funds on private property because of the extenuating circumstances with, what's the legality of this?
You know, I, I don't know enough about it yet. You're raising good questions, how this, how this all got started? And why, why it doesn't discharge at the front anymore, or what the problem is gonna be if it goes back that way. Those are all things I'm just unfamiliar with in this property.
If I could just make a comment, I, Kyle asked me to go out with him this past Monday. And I concur with the summary that Ed gave exactly, it was sort of accurate. And the, from the homeowner, from the current homeowner's position, they're looking to put their house up on the market. And to also assist in, in their thought that because the sump pump hose was no longer draining to the swale that was repaired, that they're trying to find another solution to get rid of the water. And in looking at doing something that would be in good faith to this area of our village, which we know has water issues that we've spent a lot of money on, it seemed to me in discussing it with, with Mrs. Thompson that morning, that this investment of of five to $700, but at the same time, the, the actual work excluding any topsoil and any, any visual improvement could be on the lower end of that budget. That the village would look at spending that money to get rid of the water, to make that, that part of the neighborhood look better and, and the house being sold. If there's any additional landscaping and stuff, if the next door neighbor, which I admit, I did not have a chance to speak to the, the next door neighbor at 1754, as Ed did. But, you know, any agreement that they would make with the Thompsons to put seed or dirt would be at their expense. Because this has been somewhat created by having them had to move the sump from the front swale to the back. That's why I would be, you know, looking more to helping them get rid of this water that's building up. I did send a couple of photos just for your reference, just so you guys had an idea where, where it is. That's all I had.
The overall consensus as to what we do with the situation? We want to get some more information from Mr. Schuster. The bottom line is private property, public funds, as Steve alluded. We're talking 700 to bucks or so, plus the time of public works over there again.
The real way it should be done, if there's gonna be an easement, it should be recorded. And that means a survey and that means attorney's fees. And the question is, one, one, it's a little bit late maybe, but why wasn't this all addressed when we did the swale work in the beginning?
It was addressed, Tom. This situation, the Thompsons approached us and said their swale was wet. It didn't drain properly. They were told, move your sump to the rear of the property and see if the swale will dry out. They're claiming that we forced them to move the discharge to the rear. They were just simply informed, moving it to the rear would keep water out of the swale and would help the swale to dry. They are more than welcome to move the sump rack up to the front swale. The problem is, once again, as Ed pointed out, they're gonna have a wet spot in the front and there's gonna be wet swale down along their neighbors again. They brought this issue to us, I want to say probably some six or eight years ago when they said they wanted to sell the house. They're still at that point.
I, I just, I think that even forgetting the village money, but the village cutting, putting something in that's, that's not a, a pipe that's not recorded. Next owner comes in or if that pipe somehow breaks on the neighbor's property, they're gonna be coming back to us, looking to us for it. And I, I sympathize with the problem, but it just seems like a whole can of worms here. So I don't, do you want to get Mark's opinion? Is that what we wanted to do or?
I, that's what I provide Mr. Schuster with some more of the details. Bottom line is a sump pump at one resident wants to run through their property through a neighbor's property to a drainage structure.
If they want to do it on their.
They want us to pay for it.
Well, yeah, if they want to do it on their own and the neighbor agrees and they're gonna do it on, I don't wanna say on the fly, but do it without us maybe incurring future liability or, or questions on it. I don't have a problem with that, you know.
But I do agree with Anthony's comment that it does affect multiple homes back there with the wetness, does it not, Anthony? I haven't been back there for a while.
It, it, it does. There, there's also some normal range swampy area there as well. You know, it's hard to determine what's actually coming out of the sump as opposed to what's, you know, laying there because of the lowland. I, I think that, I, you know, I, I'd be willing to work with Ed or submit stuff directly to Mark to see what is involved in doing this. But I just think from a good faith perspective, because of some of the issues that have happened in, with this residence over the years, that we would want to avoid the, moving back to the swale. But I think we would want to look at trying to do something to mitigate this problem for future residences in that area.
I concur. So it's a, it's a complicated issue, but I, I would kind of like to hear Mark's opinion on the whole thing, so.
Yeah, and I would add a $500 to $700 project is a lot different. As Tom brought up, if this turns into a multi thousand dollar project because of requirement, easement requirements, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I would ask that Mark, as he suggests, that he more familiarized himself with the situation to get a better idea of what's involved.
Yeah, and markets also possibly, if we don't fully, if we don't need the easements and to go to that, if we can just have some kind of release of, and I won't say liability, but you know, release that it's village property doing, they were doing, you know, doing this for the convenience of the homeowners and for the benefit of the village at all to run it to the drainage structure, which it sounds like due to. Am I, am I correct? I thought we went all the way to the end of the easement because of the, the utility boxes and some of the bushes, we're, we're able to put the drain all the way up to their properties. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's basically is because right at the comment box, that's when there's a large burn. And it's very heavily wooded back there and you take a lot of clearing in order to actually put anything within the easement itself.
Yeah, I sympathize with their, their, what they're dealing with too. I mean, we know there's a lot of people that pump a lot of water all over the village. I just want to be very careful and if we do do something with this, we have to look at things on a case by case basis. Because I think the liability that opens up the village for everybody wanting their sump pump line buried is out there now. So I just want to be very careful about that. Because, you know, I think everything has to be looked at as a, like you said, as a case by case basis. And what's the smart sense and what's the smart spend on the money that we have?
Yeah, I, I think we're all in agreement with that, with all the various questions that have come.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, we will. All right, we will provide Mr. Schuster with some more of the details and we will continue this conversation on the eighteenth of May. How's that sound for consensus on this at the moment?
Agreed.
I agree.
Yep.
All right, fair enough. Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, the next item under old business is roadside brush cleanup by volunteers. Uh, Mr. Hoff at the last meeting, uh, called and asked for permission to do some, uh, cleanup along Sleepy Hollow Road, Randall Road and Route seventy-two, I believe. Uh, we asked him to delay until the board had a chance to review the waiver policies. Uh, we've done that this evening. Uh, Mr. Hoff has not gotten back with a makeup date or a for this, but, uh, I understand it's supposed to be sometime latter part of May, early June. Uh, is the board, uh, willing to give Mr. Hoff the, uh, uh, clearance to go ahead and gather his volunteers and get their waiver form signed and clean up some of the village for us?
I, I, uh, we have a question for you, Mr. I thought he was gonna, it says brush.
Well, it was trash and brush.
I thought they were gonna.
It's pretty much trash.
You know, we're not gonna get back in this.
No, we're not getting back into tree trimming at the moment.
We're gonna get that a break. So if there's branches laying down and stuff, they'll take care of those. What they do every.
Right, right, right. Uh, so, does there anybody have any, uh, objections to Mr. Hoff for getting his group of volunteers and, uh, doing some spring cleanup?
I, I, I have no objection. I know originally it was, you know, the social distancing piece and, I mean, I think things, you know, if, as long as they're being safe and, and they're keeping their distance and they're, they're picking up some stuff, I, I don't have any issue with it, uh, later this month, uh, early, or, early June.
I have no issue with it and I applaud him for doing it.
I do too. Yeah, same here.
Okay, general consensus is Mr. Hoff can move forward as long as the waivers are signed and turned into the village.
Right.
All right, okay. Any other old, uh, old business come before the board? Not being any more old business, any new business to come before the board? There being no.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Move to second at all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Ayes have it. We are adjourned. We will see you on the eighteenth of May.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody.